City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, July 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Senate of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Pryler.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Burkhammon.
Here.
Interim City Manager Itrich.
Here.
All right, we need approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? We need one addition, and that would be the new conference room board table, which would be, oh, we got 11H.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as amended.
Support. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of June 17th, 2021? Any discussion or changes? So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of June 17th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving down to the consent agenda, we have a couple of things. We've got to cancel the August 5th meeting, departmental activity reports, which is the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report. We got the Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 10th, the Community and Economic Development meeting minutes of May 26th, the Michigan Municipal League's, Michigan Municipal League Certificate of Membership, and the business license for Andy's Market, which is really a name change only, and that was Food Depot. So Food Depot is now Andy's Marketplace. They're doing a great job fixing that up. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through G.
Support.
And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Pryler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Burkhammon.
Yes.
Okay, we have a public hearing. Notice is hereby given to the City. The City Commission will conduct a hearing to hear the comments on 924 Metropolis in Marine City. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and the public hearing has been declared open at 7:04 PM. And just a reminder that no board member is allowed to make comments during public hearing.
Yep. Madam Mayor, could I just speak on the public hearing process for a minute, because I think it's a very important process? So, the public hearing would be a time when we just hear comments from the public. We don't respond. We just digest what the public has to say about this particular issue. I think to the extent the property owner is here and/or representative of the property owner, they should be advised, and are being advised right now, that they may have a chance to speak directly to the Commission under Item 10C, so they don't have to be, get their comments into the five minutes of the public hearing process, because the board may have questions for those people. So right now, we were, we would be at the, at the public hearing, and we would just listen to what the public has to say on this issue.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak? Okay. I'm declaring the public hearing has closed at 7:05 PM. Moving down to financial business, we have expenditures, including payroll of $474,884.18. I need a motion to approve expenditures. Anybody have any questions?
I make a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll for $474,884.18.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Pryler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Burkhammon.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
And moving down to unfinished business, we have the master plan final approval. Can I have a motion to approve the ma, the master plan?
I'll make a motion. We approve the master plan.
Support. Motion and support, discussion?
Yes. I was going to bring it up at the media, at the Commissioner, because I'm the representative. They tabled that. The Planning Commission tabled that and took it back.
No.
They, they approved it.
No, they tabled it. They, they, because of the, the, what is it? Addition of the maps and stuff wasn't in, and there was stuff about the, the parking downtown.
That's what, yeah.
But that was the massive part of the master plan.
The only, the only part we're doing is this part of the master plan. The master plan has to be redone again within the next five years, totally, all the way through. So this is, this is, the only part we did was for the properties we have.
And, and the mapping.
Yeah, the mapping is all wrong. Every one of those maps is bad. And I don't know why, when we brought this up, I even went to the meeting and brought it up, because it's ridiculous to put out a master plan when all our maps and things are incorrect.
The master plan has, this was only to reflect the buildings. That was it.
But your maps reflect the buildings and stuff, and it's all wrong. So that's what I'm saying. You're, you're putting in one thing, and yet you're not correcting another. So why would you put out a document where all the maps and all the stuff is incorrect?
Well, I was, I was told it went through the Planning Commission, and you guys approved this the first time. This is a step-by-step place how it went. And you approved it, and it went to Planning Commission. They approved it, had the public hearing. Now it's back here again. So you guys already approved this one time.
But we also brought up the fact the maps are all incorrect, and we wanted them fixed.
Don't know about that.
I mean, it's, it's dumb to go through all this trouble of putting out a master plan, and every map in there is incorrect.
I remember you bringing that up.
Yeah.
I remember Elaine saying that it's so costly that they only do that every five years.
Right. And that's, and that's coming up.
It's amazing.
It's actually coming in three years.
Yes, it's coming in three years.
She said she hasn't looked, hasn't done it in five years.
Every five years, your master plan has to be redone. Okay? Our master plan ends in 2021. So 2022, we are starting our master plan over again. This is just to get these buildings off the master plan.
It wasn't just to get the buildings off. I mean, that was part of the issue. One of the issues was to get the buildings off.
This was for, we could sell.
So that we could, so that we could transact property that was designated in the master plan as a part.
But they changed more in the master plan.
And I, I just, that's all, I'm just saying, that's what I recall.
I, I remember that, too. But then more was changed in there, and it was the idea to go through the whole thing. And when we kept bringing up the maps, and it's like, the maps aren't that hard to change.
Well, my understanding from this is just that we passed it, you passed it, went back to the Planning Commission, they passed it, went to public hearing, back here for final approval, so we can go forward with the buildings. Nothing else is going to be changed until we start working on the master plan, the whole plan, starting in 22.
All the maps, everything will be updated at that time. But a lot of other things were changed, just so you know. There was other things that were changed.
But you got people coming right now that are asking for zoning, and the map's wrong.
Yes. That's all we've been saying all along, is that we should be fixing the maps. And, and yeah, it has a big effect on things down. So if the maps are saying one thing, and we have to follow the master plan, and they're wrong.
Well, 2022, the master plan, we started over again.
Well, I understand. I mean, I've been through this a couple of times, because I've been on here long enough. But all I'm saying is, the map should be fixed, because we've got parks out of place, we've got zoning out of place, we've got, you know, I don't see the point of putting out a document that's in that, all those things are bad, and there's a lot of documents, maps in there.
Could we approve it to the extent that it removes the, or addresses the building so that the buildings can be transacted?
Wasn't that one of our primary purposes?
That was the primary purpose of this for right now, just to, so we can get the buildings and that piece of property we have on Brew Street. That was the intent of this, doing this.
Otherwise, otherwise, we can't move forward.
I, I agree with that, and, and we've been waiting for it, but it, they did all sorts of other stuff before they even got to that.
Okay, I, like I said.
So that's what I couldn't figure out, because I thought that's all we were supposed to do, and yet the whole thing was getting reworked, and yet the maps didn't.
So maybe you could just approve the, that portion.
All right. Everything but the maps?
Yeah, and, and reserve the maps for, for updating. I think it's important that we get those properties off the master plan. For the other purposes we have.
So, yeah, so how would we, how would we word that? Word that motion.
Well, you could just make a motion to adopt and approve the master plan, subject to the maps being corrected.
There you go.
Did Jake, did Jake do a motion on that?
Well, then I need a motion to start.
Make a motion to approve the master plan as submitted, subject to the maps being corrected. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Building Department staffing recommendation. Mike?
Well, we've met over the last couple of weeks trying to figure out how to take care of the Building Department. And I think the best thing we can do is outline, outlined in here, is to make the county clerk and the building official clerk the same person. They'll be helping each other out. We'll have somebody in that position that will know a little bit about the, the building code, you know, and that could help out with the applications, the building applications, everything else, could answer simple questions, give, give the guys, or give whoever a timeframe where your house can be inspected. Keep everything up on BSNA, and I think this, what I have in here will really work. Putting the online payment plan, I think, would be really helpful. Because right now, you know, somebody mails the letter, you may get it in a week, or you may get it in two weeks. We don't know. So, then update the Building Department forms. That would be, so on your, like a deck form, you'll be having how-to. So this is what you need in, in that form. It's going to say, if you're adding electricity, you need electrical permit. If you're doing plumbing, you need a plumbing permit. Every form would be like that, make it nice and simple for everybody. And we're going to also put the forms on our webpage, so people can fill them out on the webpage and send them to us. And also the BSNA. Right now, our code enforcer, he can't utilize that. So once we get set up and, we're set up a new building, we're going to give access to BSNA, where we can track it. So when somebody comes up, hey, where we're at this, I can look it up and tell you. So, and that's about it. I think this will work out really, really well, and help the community out.
So your permit clerk is going to get the applications?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Your permit clerk.
Yes.
Right, we'll get the, we'll get the applications.
They'll get the applications, make sure they fill it out correctly.
And they can send them in by?
Yep.
But we still have the 10-day period to issue the license.
Yes.
To the state.
This, this should make it faster for everybody.
Well, everybody wants it tomorrow, and they're not going to.
I know, but we're trying, we're trying to streamline this, so everybody gets something faster and timely, and be good with it.
Well, I, I like all your additions, but what's the cost to this person? Because now you're putting a full-time in that adds benefits.
Well, we're actually, we're actually, we were going to hire a full-time building inspector and a clerk.
Yeah.
So by doing this, we're actually saving money, because now instead of paying the 60 hours a week here, and another 40 hours a week there, we're only still paying the 10 hours and the 40 hours.
But, but you're not hiring a full-time building inspector?
No.
So he's still at eight hours a week?
10 hours a week, yes.
Or 10 hours?
Yes.
It's really not enough. I hate to say it, I mean.
Well, it's, the way we got it worked out, he won't have to be in the office, sitting behind a computer for an hour, two hours a day.
Well, I understand. I'm good with, with that part of it, okay? But I think we're still lacking, because people are waiting so long. And it's no fault of yours, it's because he doesn't have the hours in here to get the, do all the inspections and do all the things that need to be done.
This is, that's, we worked off of that. We got that handled, we pretty sure, by having the temp, or having the secretary set schedules, so he knows what time he has to be there. We can work it out that way.
What about the fees? We're still doing that?
Yes. Nothing else has changed. We're just bringing in the full-time assistant.
But I mean, we also talked about trying to eliminate the fees, because that's a big cost to us, where most municipalities aren't paying it. I mean, you got somebody right here that's an expert.
But you work more hours than 10 hours a week someplace. That's, that's part of it, too. He only works 10 hours, and the community is also, where he works at pays half his FICA. We don't. He pays for own schooling, pays for his own, where he has to go, he pays for that himself. So that's no cost to us.
I think what she's saying is, you're paying him an hourly rate, which I get at all the units, all the four that I've worked at, it's an hourly rate, no commission on the permits.
But we're not here to talk about the, he's already in place. We're here to talk about hiring a.
Well, originally, we were supposed to hire a new building inspector. That was what we were originally intending to do.
What?
Full-time building inspector.
I realize that, but we only had two applicants, and neither one, and we got, looking at this, this would be the best way we could do it, save money.
The city didn't even look at, there's two companies, and, and I know they tried calling her, she didn't return calls. We didn't even look at that avenue, just to see if it was worthwhile to do.
Well.
There's Safebuilt and McKenna.
I, I know who they are.
And they've, they've called me every conference that we go to.
We spec.
They're there with their advertising and stuff. And all, all I asked her to do before was listen to see what they've got.
I realize that.
I didn't tell her to hire them, just listen to see what they've got.
They called her because they called him. She didn't call back. All I'm saying is, I don't have a problem with some of this stuff, but I'm just trying to figure out, because I've got no costs here of what we're doing, even though we're combining in this, and I realize, yeah, you're, so you're not hiring him full-time, but there's an added cost to hiring another full-time here.
Well, the new building inspector that you okay was going to make 55,000 plus benefits. We're down to, last year, he made 14.
And how much is the new person?
The new person.
14 plus.
No, that's 14 total.
Total. Even with all the proceeds?
Yes, total.
And the new person?
The new person for.
That you're hiring is what's the total cost?
For hers, we're, she's looking at it.
Yeah.
But, but we're saving $55,000 from the full-time.
It just would have been nice to have some facts and figures of what, you know, for that to be broken down.
39.5.
39.5.
So instead of the 55, you're paying 39, and the other stays the same?
Yes.
So you're paying 39 plus benefits, or does that include benefits?
That would be plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
Okay, so that's another addition.
Right. But on the other hand, we were looking at 55 plus benefits.
But your benefits could cost you another 20 grand.
Same amount, 55.
So then you're back up to 50-some thousand.
But we're hiring one person instead of two.
I know what you're doing, yeah. I'm just trying to do the math here, you know, I mean.
In the long run, this will work, and it'll be cheaper.
I know, that's why I asked about getting a price from, because Mount Clemmons has now got rid of all their building inspectors and hired McKenna, or Safebuilt, one or the other. And I just wanted to see what they were offering. If you don't put all the eggs in the basket, then how can you?
We can look at it down the road right now to get this thing up and running, and to get people going again. This is the best plan that we can work with. We worked on this for a long time to try to figure this out, how we're going to do this, and this is what we came up with, and I believe this is really going to work.
So you have a person already, or you have to hire a person?
We already did interviews, and we have a person in mind. So.
Good.
Okay?
Good. Get the ball rolling.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for looking into this and doing all your, doing all the work and interviews and all that good stuff. All right, where are we?
No.
All right. Moving on to dangerous building, 924 Metropolis. Mike or?
Well, well, I can, I can start, and Mike can chime in, and I made sure that the building folks were here. In case you had questions. So this, this issue dates back to 2019, and in October of 2020, we gave the property owner 30 days to provide a structural engineering report that had been discussed and, and offered.
What was that date again?
It was October 7th of 2020, I think. And we also asked for a detailed plan of action to bring the property into compliance. In April 7th, I think, of 2021, the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals convened, and the home, or the owner affirmatively stated a couple of times that she had a structural engineering report, but she was not going to provide it, because she wanted to provide it to this board of commissioners. So the board off, they offered to extend her deadline for the engineering report, but again, she stated, no, I just want to get to the Board of Commission. I just, I, I just want to get to the Board of Commission. So then you guys heard the issue, and you gave until June 7th for us to, to get, receive and look at that structural engineering report, so you guys could have some, you know, some professional input as to the condition of the structure. And then you set this public hearing, because you did not receive that document. And it's my understanding that the property owner was notified by regular mail and by certified mail, and this public hearing was posted properly, so there was notice of this, of this issue tonight. And the next thing would, would be, would be to hear from the applicant, or the, I'm sorry, the owner.
The homeowner.
Right.
Property owner, I should say, yeah.
Or the property owner's representative.
Yeah.
We've heard nothing back.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, for the record, you should call to the audience to see if there's anyone here on behalf of the homeowner.
Is there anyone here on behalf of the homeowner at 924 Metropolis in Marine City? Okay.
Thank you.
Bob, do you, if?
Well, it seems to me like numerous attempts have been made, I mean, like numerous attempts. And, I mean, there's only so much we can do as a board when we don't have any, anything in front of us, you know, from an engineer or any other, you know, building official that says that the house is not in disrepair. Tracy, do you have anything to, you want to address the board? I, I kind of looked this up a long, a little bit ago, and, and I think that that house was first cited for blight in 2007, so this has been an ongoing issue.
It is. Good evening. I took the opportunity this afternoon to go by and take a couple of photos. So I'll, I'll just ask you to pass these along. So the first photo has a date on it, which is preceding, okay, this is the, this is today's photo, and this is at least a year, and this might be two years in advance, so the dates are on the bottom. And I'll keep talking and looking at the. So Ms. Watson, I believe she's the owner of the property now, 924 Metropolis, had a question as to how I could, as a building official, determine her property dangerous. But International Property Maintenance Code, I copied a couple pages out of it, clearly states that on 108.1.5, dangerous structures or premises, for the purpose of this code, any structure or premise that has any or all of its conditions or defects described as follows shall be considered dangerous. There is 11 paragraphs on what constitutes danger, and she hits on all of them, but I just kind of highlighted the most important ones. As you can see in the photo, a walking surface or aisle, passageway, stairway, exit, or other means of egress is so warped, worn, torn loose, or otherwise unsafe. As you can see, that porch is not safe. It's, it's out of level by four or five inches, and that would be number two. Number three would be any portion of the building or structure deterioration, neglect, abandonment would also constitute a dangerous building. Number six, the building or structure of any portion thereof is clearly unsafe for its use or occupancy, so it can't be occupied. Number seven, the building or structure is neglected, damaged, dilapidated, unsecure, abandoned, it goes on and on and on, as to attract vagrants, criminals, immoral persons, and enable persons to resort to, in the building or structure committing a nuisance or unlawful acts. The building is not secure to that point. Number 10, any building or structure becomes a lack of sufficient proper fire resistance or rated construction, and I highlighted on plumbing systems or cause can be determined dangerous as a threat or life or health, because the water has been turned off since 2016. So they have no working sewer system in that house. And.
When was it turned off?
The water's been turned off since 2016.
That's when the gentleman passed away.
That's when the water was shut off.
So nobody's lived in that house since then.
Since he's passed away. But he lived in it up to that point.
That's correct, but there's other passages in the International Property Maintenance Code that says you have to, in 180 days, either you have to live in the house, or you have to sell it with a licensed realtor. And neither one of those has happened in five years' time.
But we have, I could probably pick out six or seven houses in this town in the same condition.
I understand that, but we're talking about 924 Metropolis right now.
All right. Well, that's fine, but some of these have been older than that one, I guess is the issue.
When did we adopt the 2000, the International Property Maintenance Code?
I'm sorry?
When did the city adopt?
I can't quote when the board adopted that, but they have adopted all the, the newest.
The 2015, 2000 building code?
Yeah, we're in the, we're in the 2015 code cycle right now, so.
That's by the state. They force you to do that, but you have to adopt the International Building Code separately. I just asked you when, when we did it.
I don't know that answer.
So if you, if you, if you haven't adopted it, you can't enforce it?
Well, I'm assuming that it's adopted, because it's, it's part of our code that we require.
I remember that we adopted the 2000, whatever, the latest 15, the state code, but I don't remember we ever did the international.
Counselor, you're, are you familiar enough with the ordinances to know if we've adopted?
I probably, I probably wasn't here, but I, no, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just know, because I deal with another unit, so. I, I just know, 'cause I deal with another unit, so, and I have to, if I'm gonna use the Property Maintenance Code, they have to adopt it as part of their code. And I don't know if that was done here, but that's, regardless, it's...
Well, I know, I know that, I know that at the public hearing, sir, you, you, you offered one more time. You said, "Let's, um, let's give one more opportunity to get the structural engineering analysis," and so that we could, we could actually look at it and compare it to the items. And Mrs. Wa, the minutes say Mrs. Watson again said no, and asked that this be moved to a hearing before the city commission, and then there was a motion made and seconded and approved to demolish that property. Is that your recollection?
It is.
The other thing I was gonna ask you earlier, before I was interrupted with you, this isn't the last straw, right? She has a right to appeal to the circuit court.
Well, you're, normally what you would do is you would order, you would vote to order the demolition and then give certain amount of days for that occur before you would incur the expense and put it on the tax roll. So during that time period, yes, she could appeal the issue.
If I remember the past practice with that family, he's had several go-ins with the courts, and every time we got him to a certain point, he went to the courts and they went, "Oh, oh, we're gone, we're not gonna make you take it down, we're not making you do stuff." So there is another process for her, and I don't know if that's what she's waiting for, or what, but...
If you, if you look at the minutes from the public...
We can go ahead and do it, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, I mean, mo, most of the minutes, they go back and forth about, about the structural integrity, and, and Mrs. Watson says, "Hey, I've got a structural integrity report."
Right.
And this young man says, "Please show it to us because we'll adjourn and we'll
look at it." And she says, "I'm not giving it to you." And then you say, "Can we just give you a little more time? Could you give us the report?" And then she says, "I'm not giving you the report. I'm going to give it to the commissioners." And then you hold a meeting and you say, "Well, we're gonna give you more time till June 7th to give us the report, and then we're gonna put it on for hearing in our July meeting if we don't hear from you." So June 7th comes and we don't hear anything. I agree with all of you that, you know, demo, demolishing a home is a very significant event. It's why I wanna make sure the public hearing was conducted properly. It's why I checked with the court clerk, or the city clerk to make sure the notices were made, that the publication was made, that we did certified mail, that we did regular mail, and that you called to the audience looking for a representative. I want all that to be in the record. It's a difficult situation, but you're, you're not here to retry the case in a sense. You're not here to redo the hearing. You already, there's already been a hearing by your designated board that, that voted for demolition. You're here to listen to the applicant to determine if there's a reason why you shouldn't uphold the findings of your Dangerous Building Board.
I, the only thing I was asking, is she does have...
Always.
To circuit court, so...
Always.
And with, the dad always got in trouble, and then went through it, went through it, and then went to court, and the judge overruled us.
So any, any, any motion that, that you would contemplate this evening would be a motion to uphold the, or to deny, or to uphold the findings of the Dangerous Building Board and to provide the homeowner with, you can say, 30 or 6, whatever you come up with, so many days to seek all appropriate permits and conduct that demolition. If not, the city will undertake the demolition and place the cost of the demolition on the tax rolls.
Okay, so what if the city finds out that they didn't approve the International Building Code?
Well, I, I think that's just one thing that you've, I don't, you know, I think that's one set of conditions that he's relied on.
True. I mean, I've sat through some of the, I sat through some of the hearings. I know Bill did too, and I've looked at that house thoroughly. I mean, I know, like I said, I could name off, I don't know how many houses that are way worse than this one. And, and there were some issues with the first hearing that, that she brought forward, and she wasn't allowed to get that documented. And it had to do with what the, not, not this building inspector, but the former building inspector said about the property, and she wanted to bring that forward, and they refused to allow her to do that. We were both sitting there when that happened. She brought the person as a witness, and they refused to allow that to be entered into the information, which, I mean, I thought it was very pertinent, what she brought forward. Now, she also has cleaned up a ton of stuff around there. If you've seen this house a couple of times, she's cleaned up all the garbage. She's hauled out a ton of stuff around that house that used to be there. That's all gone. So basically, the house is just sitting there. It looks pretty straight to me. I mean, I've seen some worse ones in this town. It took longer to get the one by the print shop tore down that was sinking in the middle than this one. And then there's another one on Broadway that nobody's lived in for longer than this house, and yet, I guess I'm just curious as, and there were some issues, like I said, that the comments that the prior building inspector made that, you know, that should've been looked at.
The motion, the motion at the first hearing was a motion by Allen, seconded by board member Atterbury. Table the appeal, subject to a list of code requirements being sent to the owner of the property. Owner has 30 days from receipt to respond back with a detailed timeline of when stated items will be addressed, and that passed in full. So the first hearing...
She didn't get a list. She got a code book.
I, I'm just saying, the first...
I, I know what that says.
The first, the first hearing ended with tabling.
Yeah.
The second hearing ended with demolition.
Yeah, but she never got a list. She got a code book from Susan, and she didn't get a list of what was to be done. So how is she supposed to do that based on just...
May I address that, Commissioner Hendricks?
Sure.
Yeah, I do believe that code official or building official, Susan Wilburn, was not allowed to gain entrance to the house. So how could she do her job if she could not gain access to the house?
She can do from the exterior and look at the exterior.
That's right.
Which we did. And a lot, a lot of the items, I know you're, you're questioning whether we've adopted International Property Maintenance Code, but we certainly adopted the Michigan Residential Code, and a lot of the items would fall into that easily enough.
Yeah, the, the minutes do say that she, she refused the city to have entrance to the house.
Yeah, I, I heard that.
And if you refuse, there's this section in the code that says, "You have to, we have to go get an order from the court."
If you want, if, if you...
If you want to gain entry.
If you require entry, you have to seek an order.
But in the meantime, all you can look at is from the street view.
Correct. You're correct.
And I'm, and I'm not saying we shouldn't tear it down, or we shouldn't do this. I'm just saying that she has other, that...
She has another avenue.
Other, other outages that would, she would, then she would file against the city. So then we'd have to defend it.
Well, her, her avenue right now would be to go to circuit court on an injunction motion and try to enjoin the, the decision of the city and then have it reversed.
Yeah.
I mean, at what point, at what point do we say enough is enough? How many times do we require the homeowner to come with documentation, to come to the meetings, and they don't come? So this is a start. You were talking about all the other, you know, homes that are, and I agree with you 100 percent. We, this is a start. We have to start looking at all the homes that are dilapidated and, you know, quote unquote, dangerous, and, and we need to move forward. But, but we here as a board, I mean, we have to put the onus on the owner, on the owner, you know? We're constantly defending, where are they to give us this information when it's, when it's requested and requested and requested? And we don't have anything.
But, but you also have to, if, if you sat through it like we did, and you saw how at first she was treated by some of it, and she wasn't allowed to present her whole case, I don't blame her. So if, if her whole thing was she wasn't being treated fairly and that's how she felt, I don't think she was treated fairly either.
At one meeting.
Well, it was an important meeting.
But it was one meeting, and, and since then, we requested it time and time again for her to bring in documentation.
She did not get the list. She did not get the stuff that she was supposed to. They told Wilburn to give her a list. She did not get a list from her. So how is she supposed to do the repairs if she's not given a list by the city? So I think there's a little bit on both sides. I'm not saying that everything's right, but I think there's some issues here on both sides. And I don't think totally that we did due diligence either by not allowing her to give her information properly.
But she has never brought us any information. If, if I wanted to keep my property, regardless of how I was treated, I would bring in documentation from an engineer.
She did bring and show that she had done cleanup.
But I think right now, I mean, I would say, other than you two, none of us have ever heard any of this.
That's why I go to those meetings because I wanna see what happens.
So, I think it's...
She had an opportunity to speak tonight, or a representative tonight, and we have nothing. We held a public hearing.
Well, throughout, throughout the underlying hearings, if you read the minutes, she, she made it clear she was waiting for her opportunity...
Waiting for us. I have the meeting minutes, yes.
Yeah, to be before you, you all.
Yep, and here we are. So, okay.
Well, what, what you can do procedurally to make sure, you know, we're doing all that we can as a city is, if you're inclined to follow your building board and order the demolition, set it out in time. Have the motion instruct the clerk to have the certified letter sent indicating the decision of the, of the city commission. I would find a way to get that to them, even if we have to process serve that, so that there's absolute notice. And then the property owner would still, as Bill has indicated, have another right in the court system to, to challenge this.
I just didn't want us to get into a lawsuit where we have put in our time, your pay.
Right.
Because if he gets, she gets in there and says, "Well, did they send anybody else anything? Is this selective enforcement?" You gotta see what judge is sitting there. One judge won't care anything, the other, the other one would say it's selective enforcement. Who else did you do?
Right. I understand, Bill.
Yeah.
I even called her at a past meeting and just said, "I wanna make sure you got it," because I, I can't remember correctly. I think it was refused, and she's, "I know, I've been checking all the agendas," so...
Like I said, past practice, her dad took us to court every time. He got a violation and one against us. And he got several violations.
I think, I think we can all agree that, at the end of the day, we just want compliance, right?
Right.
So I don't know of another avenue other than what we've done so far to get compliance.
Right.
We've extended that olive branch three times and...
Right.
I wanted to make sure if we end up in circuit court that we, we got everything on the right page, if we're lined up.
Mm-hmm.
Or not. It won't get, it's thrown out because you didn't do this right.
Thank you for having our backs.
I'm here for you. Thank you.
All right, we need to move on. So I need a motion to, in my opinion, we need to approve the, uh, the actions taken by the Dangerous Building Board of Appeals. Somebody needs to get a motion in there. Uphold the findings of the DBB, give the homeowner 30 days, right?
30 or 60, your choice.
The mail takes a long time, maybe 60 would be a good idea.
You wanna do 60?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we uphold the findings of the Dangerous Building Board, calling for demolition of the structure and provide the applicant 60 days to complete demolition before the city takes action. Is that correct?
And that the clerk take as much action as necessary to make sure the homeowner's notified.
Notified.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion. I need a second.
Support.
All right. We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flosser?
Yes, if it goes to court, we're in trouble. Go ahead.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Prideley?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Can you hear her camera?
Yes.
Commissioner Bricer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to new business. Request for proposals for the real estate services. Mike?
All right, we put together this, and we're gonna send this out to a number of real estate agents to give proposals, for services to sell the three properties we have, and we'll bring it back in front of the commission at the August 19th meeting, if we have a good one to bring back to you. But just the, um, same thing, just somebody that's gonna sell the buildings and make sure we get a good return on them, you know, and that's gonna take care of us and not stiff us with a high selling fee and whatever. And hopefully by the 19th, we'll have it back to you, and we can make a decision on who we're gonna use to sell the buildings and the property.
And how are we advertising this?
We're actually gonna mail these out and to all the local real estate agents.
Yeah.
And then probably out to, further out, and put it on their webpage. We'll get it out there like we do everything else, do our best.
So one person, one person firm, whatever, is gonna handle?
Yes.
The transit, okay.
Yes.
All of it, all right.
All of it.
And can you let everybody know what the three buildings are?
Um, it's gonna be 303 South Water, 823 Bruce is the property, and 300 Broadway.
So that's the Guy Center that's in there?
Yes.
Okay, and so this, this commission isn't gonna allow anybody from the city to discuss the options for the Guy Center because it's, it's a very important building to the people of this community?
In what way? I mean, it's, 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 it's in very bad disrepair. So you wanna spend money on it?
It's not, it's not in that bad a disrepair.
It floods, right?
That's only because the, she didn't put the sandbags in the back when the river overflowed, other than that...
Hold on, that's not true.
Well, it also has the sump pump in the base.
It has a sump pump in the base, but that river crept out the rest in 15 minutes. So, I mean...
Well, I'm not saying it didn't, but I'm not saying it's a regular occurrence either, you know? That building is not in that bad a shape, but I think it's important that the people of this community are allowed to speak their piece on the piece property because this is, this, the city has booted them out of their community center for 15 years. And I realize that you got a room over there, but I think it's important to hear from the people because they're not happy about the sale of this building, because it's their building. And I think you at least gotta give them a opportunity to speak on it, and just sell it up from under them and, and tell them what you're gonna do with the, the money, because there are rules attached to that building.
Well, from the least I read, there's no rules attached to it.
Well, there is.
Oh, okay.
Our prior attorney has all the documentation, and there's rules attached to it.
I don't know. I read it too, and I didn't think there was any rules attached to it. And every person that I've talked to, and I'm in the community a lot, the Guy Center, there's an access issue. You know, Water Street is extremely busy, and, you know, as you know, just trying to go pay a bill, you know?
I understand that, but they still have a right.
And so we're gonna turn it into a community center where no one can park. I mean, it's...
They still have, they should still be able to voice their opinion on it. I, I think it's wrong that you just cut them out.
We're not cutting, we're not cutting anybody out.
You're just selling it.
We have every right to sell it. That's why we're selling it. We're trying to get money into the, into the, into the city budget, so...
At their expense.
All right, so, so what would, like, what would, what do we need to do for this?
I'm just, this is just informational for you, that on the August 19th meeting, we'll have realtors for you to look at, to choose who we're gonna go with to sell these buildings.
In the past, we've approved the request for proposal. Do we need to do that? I know we've done that other times.
Yeah, you should, you should, you should approve the RFP as presented. You're not picking anybody. You're not hiring anybody. You're just approving the format of the RFP.
Okay.
Bob, have you seen this lease?
No, I have not. The one I was, I was wondering, is one of these properties subject to a right of first refusal?
Yes, 300 Broadway.
So that has to be, I'll take a look at that. I think the, the Broadway site, we have to give a, a notice and a right of, to, to exercise, for them to exercise their right of first refusal. I haven't seen any conditions on the other one.
I can send you a copy of that.
But we'll, we'll start looking at those that, um, as...
I did provide you with a copy of a portion of that that I did get from...
I have a small little manila.
That Mr. Yakim provided.
Yeah.
He does have the information.
Do we have it?
I don't know whether the city has it or not. I've seen it.
Cause I saw the, um, the will... Because I saw the will and the lease and...
Will and deed, yeah.
Yep.
Should be a will, a deed, and a lease.
Yep.
I got all that, I can...
Sorry, 300 South Broadway is Old City Hall.
Right.
Yes, sir. And that they, in their lease, they have a right of first refusal on the purchase. So, we have to let them know, and then they have...
Friends of City Hall do.
Right.
Yeah, they have certain rights with respect to when there's a, you know, a sale price set to match it, and so much time to match it.
Yeah, and the other one, Lori Vandrick, remember, well, nobody would remember her, but yeah. The city manager at that time. And every time that Rick had to go over there and put up Christmas lights and do stuff on the building, I had to go over and look at it, make sure he didn't damage the building because of the lease with the Guy family. So, do we know where that lease is at?
For the Guy Center building, I think we do have the lease, right?
Yeah, I have.
Should be a deed.
A lease.
A will that left instructions.
Right, yep.
And a lease.
As I said, every time that we had to do something over there, when I was the building inspector here, I had to go over and inspect it, and make sure they didn't damage it or break stuff on it that was historical value, I guess, I don't know.
All right, so, we'll look at all the other, we'll look at the paperwork, obviously, with all these buildings and purchases and...
Yeah, and we'll have to advise, whatever real estate agency you, if you engage with, you'll have to advise them. They'll want to know about the right of first refusal, that can impact the market value.
Right.
And they'll have to know if there are any restrictions with respect to these properties before they begin their marketing.
For sure. Okay.
And most of them are in the multiple listing, we think, so if you get one or two, whatever one they got, they got the multiple listing M L, and it goes out.
Fast and wide.
Fast. So, I need a motion to approve the request for proposals for the real estate services.
Make a motion to approve the request for proposals for commercial and residential real estate services?
Support.
Have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. City manager interviews. Mike?
Okay, we kind of came up with the tentative schedule, but now we're down to three candidates only. We had a couple backed out. So, either on the 21st or the 26th, or 22nd, sorry, we could probably hold a meeting and interview all three, or...
I'd like to do all three.
All three? Okay.
And if we could possibly start it, if it's possible, at 5:00? 5:00 on the 21st?
Is that, what's the date? Is that a Friday, Thursday?
No, gosh, no.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah, we'll try to get it done in one day, because...
It's a Wednesday.
Okay, and the Fridays are always good for me, because I'm off on Fridays. Otherwise, I probably don't get out of New Baltimore until 4:00.
So, does Wednesday, the 21st, at 5:00 work? I mean, obviously, we're just tentatively talking about this now, because we have to talk to the candidates.
I did check with the candidates, and I believe they're all available on the 21st.
For 5:00?
I said it'd be somewhere around 6:00, I'm not sure. They said they'd make themselves available.
Okay. All right.
They may be working somewhere else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's hope so.
So, tentatively, July 21st, 5:00 p.m. And we're going to try to get all three done in one night?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and then the rest of it, we can probably back up a couple weeks. It's still going to take three to four weeks to do a good background check and come up with a contract. So, hopefully at the August 19th meeting, everything in place, and you guys write a contract form for her, and it'll be in by middle of September.
What about the July 29th thing? Is that being cut out then?
Yes.
So, one of the odd tricky things about these interview meetings is, it will be a public meeting. It'll be, you will have a quorum here, so you'll be governed by the Open Meetings Act. When the clerk or Mike contacts these people to set up the 21st, they should ask politely, "Will you have a problem with sequestering yourself while the other people are interviewed?" They'll all say yes, but it's a formality you should not forget, because actually, they could say, "No, I'm going to stay for the whole meeting." So, when you do make that contact, just make sure they're voluntarily willing to sequester while others are interviewed.
Okay.
Get all that.
There will be a new building for this?
Yep.
Yes.
I have one question. If we're scratching the 20, what do we say, the 29th? When is the board, because if we're going to not meet again until August 19th, when will the board discuss their decision? Is it going to be, I'm just trying to prepare here, is it going to be after you've interviewed the three? Or there's got to be, at some point, there's got to be room for discussion, right?
So, can we, if we're doing the interview on the 20, the interviews on the 21st, can the board meet even the next day, but early? Like, remember, we usually meet at 9:00 in the morning.
No, that has to be done at a public meeting.
It has to be done here.
Oh.
You can either sit on it for a week and come back July 29th and say, "Hey, okay, this is our decision," or have another meeting, short meeting on July 22nd to discuss it, and take off from there.
Yeah, you have to make the decision at a public meeting. Okay.
Can we do it all on the 21st?
We could do it all on the 21st, but I just think it's going to be a long night, and some people need to be really focused on...
Yeah, you might want to go back and look at things and...
Yeah, I agree.
And you might want to vet some of the representations made.
Yeah.
Check references.
Well, that looks like it's going to be the 29th. What day is that?
It's going to be another Thursday.
Another Thursday.
Or the 22nd?
We can make it, if you want, the 29th is Thursday?
29th is a commission meeting anyway.
No.
No. We could make it, if that's Thursday, why don't we make that on the Tuesday? Be, what day would Tuesday be?
27th?
27th.
There's a pension meeting, hopefully will be done by.
4:00.
But don't bet on it.
Okay, I'll vote the 26th.
26th would work.
26th work for everybody?
Oh.
Is that Monday?
Yep, it's the Mondays.
Do it on Monday.
I can't do Monday.
Okay, then we're back to the 29th.
Or the 22nd.
Or the 22nd.
Or the 22nd. What's 22nd?
Thursday, next day after.
We would do it two days in a row, again. But we could do it, oh, it doesn't really matter. I'm just having a difficult time with its work.
How about if we set it for the 22nd, but if you, everybody feels up to it, you might be able to get it done on the 21st, so we could cancel the 22nd?
I mean, clearly, we have a good candidate, then...
That might be a quick decision. That way, we'd have the second meeting set that we could cancel, right?
Okay.
Let's just...
Let's just try that.
Do a 5:00 p.m. also? 5:00 p.m. also?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
The clerk will give us notice, right?
Could we do...
We wrote it down, the clerk will give us notice of the meeting.
I can't hear you, Bill.
The clerk will give us notice of the meeting.
That's you.
Can we do 6:00 on the 22nd?
You're killing me.
I'm sorry.
Whatever you can do.
5:00 p.m. on the 21st and 6:00 p.m. on the 22nd?
Here's the thing, I can't meet on any other days, other than Monday and Tuesday going forward, so I don't even know. If it has, we talked about it, but my schedule is now Wednesday through Sunday out of town.
Right.
So, I don't know if it has to be a quorum.
So, Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
I'm not the only one that can't do Mondays, there's a couple of us.
No, a couple of you can't too.
Well, let's make it for Tuesday, and then they have the pension plan, and we'll just have to be out of here by 6:00, 6:30.
Pension's in the 27th.
Oh, 27th.
It's not the 20th, so you're talking the 20th.
20th.
So, you want to have the interviews on the 20th? No, instead of the 21st, is that what you're saying?
Well, we want Commissioner Kreidler here anyway. And I don't think notices have gone out yet, have they?
No.
No, I just called, what I did, because it's coming up so quickly, I called to see availability on the 21st and 22nd.
Oh.
I don't know if they're available on the 20th, I could try.
We could move it to the 27th.
Yeah, but we wanted to get...
I know.
Because it's going to take a while to do background checks and blah, 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 post it up a week.
There's a pension meeting that day too.
Oh.
Could Commissioner Kreidler call in if he's awake?
We're going to issue an opinion on him, and it is going to work out, but this is, I think, some meeting where he should be here.
Yeah, I think that...
I think he feels that way, too.
The new thing is...
This is a relatively important decision.
They can call in from somewhere else, but they can't...
That may not, I'll issue some...
Check it out, that's what I've got in another unit, so...
So, does anybody have a problem with the 20th?
I don't have a problem with the 20th.
I don't.
Okay, so you're going to see if the candidates can now meet on the 20th?
At what time?
Tuesday, the 20th.
5:00? Can you do 5:00?
So, the interview's the 20th at 5:00? And then 20, the 21st, we'll need to make our decision?
Render a decision.
Unless we get done on the 20th.
Unless we get done on the 20th.
Unless we can do it all in one day. He won't be here on the 21st.
Well, if it's early, let me look.
You rock stars.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if the call-in situation works, him calling in...
For the second would be easier.
For the second meeting is a lot better than...
Yeah, sure.
Not being here for the first meeting. Would you agree, Mr. Kreidler?
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, the decision will be the July 21st at 5:00 p.m.?
For the second meeting.
The decision meeting.
So, it's the 20th, 5:00 for the interviews, and then 5:00 on the 21st?
If we don't get done.
Unless you have an earlier time, if you need an earlier time than that. Oh, if you can call in, then you're good.
I just, I'm going to, it's a flight.
Are you like in the air at that point?
Well, yeah, that's, anyway, I don't have my flight yet. I'll try not to make it, so that I'm in the air, not in the air at 5:00. I usually don't, I usually go earlier than that.
We'll have to give you money for paying for the Wi-Fi and calling.
Not allowed to use it to talk to people. They frown on that. Plane.
So, July 21st meeting, then, if you make a decision, we can start the background check, get with Bob, start a contract going, and have it back to you on the August 19th meeting. Sound good?
Yep.
And we're going to have a closed session for the contract talks?
For the contract negotiations, up until the time the contract is ready.
Okay.
Are we gonna, I mean, the last time we had the committee work with figuring out what they wanted to provide...
We'll still do that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to set a timeline up here to, you know, get somebody else sitting here, me back over there.
Okay.
All right, got it? And then Chris will give us all notices, and we'll get it all confirmed, and, all right?
Yeah, I'll probably email everyone the resumes ahead of time, because we're short on time.
Right.
I got to receive the notices tomorrow, and that would get this done.
Okay, good, good, good. All right, moving on, police live scan fingerprint system. Jason Bell from the Marine City Police Department is going to speak to us on this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the current live scan system that we have to do fingerprints, criminal fingerprints, applicant fingerprints, and contracted applicant fingerprints through the state, is outdated. It was purchased in 2015 from a Homeland Security grant, and it currently runs on Windows 7, which we all know is way out of date, and technology advances pretty much every day now, I guess. It was brought to our attention, we kind of knew where it was at, but when High Tech came out and did an inventory in February or March, I believe, of all of our systems, they had looked at it and said, "You might want to get this updated, because Microsoft isn't patching Windows 7 anymore." With that, I reached out to Clemis, who is our report management system, and they kind of determined what we have to get, software-wise, because everything has to run through them. They said it cannot be upgraded, so it has to be replaced, because of the software and the hardware that's on the current system is not compatible with Windows 10. So, putting a new hard drive or a new operating system on the current machine would not be feasible, so it has to be upgraded. This Idemia is the only company that provides this system and the software, and again, it's through Clemis, so they set the mandates on what we have to use. So, this is the only company that does provide it. And as you can see in the quote, I do believe Chief Heslop started there, the 10-print fingerprint system desktop for $79.50 is the one we would be looking at. I don't know why they didn't provide a quote with just that one, I asked them multiple times, but she had stated we can just choose that one, which is the one we need. We don't need any of the other cabinets or anything like that, or portable units. And then the annual maintenance there of $1,599, they do include it, but we're already billed that quarterly through Clemis now. So, they include that in there, but it's not addition that we would have to pay upfront.
So, $79.50?
$79.50, yes.
And this is in their budget, correct?
It is in the budget, yes.
It is in the budget.
I believe is a capital improvement project, yes. And this is something we use on a daily basis, so that security threat is there.
Anybody have any questions for Jason?
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding and go with Idemia.
I make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the police department to purchase the new Idemia fingerprint system to be compatible with the Clemis system.
For $79.50?
No, that's separate. We're just voting to...
Okay, that's right.
And the rationale is because there's a sole provider.
Correct, because they have a sole provider.
Motion to waive competitive bidding, all right. All right, roll call vote, please.
We need a second.
Support.
Now, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Neertham Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, now I need a motion to purchase the live scan fingerprint system for $79.50.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase of the live scan fingerprint system for the cost of $7,950 from Idemia.
Support.
Motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kreidler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Neertham Cameron?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution number 016-2021, the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan.
Okay, we did this for that CD BG grant, which I just found out tonight that we didn't make it past the first round. So, quite a bummer. We put a lot of work into that.
Big bummer.
We sent 61 pages in the application, and I can call tomorrow and figure out what the point system was and where we went wrong, because that's part of the thing they sent me, that they would tell me how to improve our support. So, with that being said, if we do pass this, we're still going to need it anyways for any HUD or loans or grants that we went after, we have to have this plan in place. So, we found a simple one that projects, puts a cost on more of a commercial person who's going to develop property. They have to find the people, whatever, and then the back page, it's us, if we have to, say, vac... back page, it's us, if we have to, uh, say, vacate some homes to do a parking structure for us, we have to find them suitable living space, equal to what they have, not less. That's just a quick summary of it.
And this is only going in because of the grant?
Yes. Anytime, if we want HUD money for anything, we have to have one of these.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I need a motion to approve resolution number zero-one-six dash two-zero-two-one.
Make a motion to approve resolution, um, zero-one-six dash two-zero-two-one.
Support.
We have a motion at support, roll call vote, please.
Wait, I got one more question, so.
Yeah.
So, we were putting in for a grant for roads.
Yes.
And so why do they require this particular?
Because it's HUD money.
So, so that doesn't mean just because they're doing it, you're not going to displace anybody and move anybody?
Right, doesn't mean that.
Throw them out of their house and try to find them another house?
No, just because we, uh, the CDBG grant was HUD money, we have to have this.
Yep.
And if we do write another grant for that, we have it or.
Yep, we'll have it.
And I, I guess, from what I'm hearing, that they're going to start doing this, we'll be eligible to write again next year.
Well, that's good.
So.
Okay, we have a motion and a support.
In terms of the, uh, we refer to it as C-B.
C-D.
D-G in one area and the reverse in another, C-D-E-G.
Yep.
Merely.
That might have been a typo on my part.
I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to point blame, I just wanted to make sure we're.
We'll just correct it.
Dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
It's a couple.
Right here, first, it's got C-B-D-E.
First page, second, there's one on the second page.
If you attend enough of these meetings, you'll hear those four letters in all sorts of ways.
You will hear them, believe me.
I cut and paste it.
It's like the military.
Yeah, nobody gets it right, nobody gets it right consistently.
Okay, I'll check it, I'll make all the changes, I cut and paste it, so I should have some.
Yeah, it's the second one.
So we have a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkanen.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to bridge inspections, Mike?
All right, this is our annual inspection for the Biffaloon Bridge. Um, this year, it happens to fall on our underwater inspection and the top deck inspection at the same time. Um, the engineering group that we use is one of the top ones in the state, um, they come highly recommended, we've been using them since two thousand fifteen, um, they do a really good job at it, and just asking for, if they're bidding to be waived, and have them do our bridge inspections again. This is something that we have to do for M.D.A., and it has to be reported up to the State Bridge Commission, um, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the next inspection for the bridge to the north?
That's M-29, that's the state.
That's state.
Yeah.
State.
That's state.
We talked about that.
It's not even in their five-year plan.
I saw them, I saw it being inspected the other day, I was walking my dogs over the bridge, looking through the holes at the people in the boat inspecting it.
They were down there inspecting?
I mentioned it to them, there's a hole here, as I was walking my dog by the hole that my dog could fall through.
Well, I would like, I would like some pictures underneath that bridge if anybody.
It's bad.
Yeah.
The sidewalk is dangerous.
Sidewalks, yes.
The columns are deteriorating and.
Yes.
Maybe we should get our own pictures, and I told you, next time I kayak underneath it, I'll bring my phone and.
I could do it this weekend.
Our bridge is doing a lot better than that one if that's the standard.
It's the flat one.
Just give me a job.
There's your job.
All right, text.
I like also all the booze bottles that are stored on the I-beams when you're kayaking beneath it, and the bird nests, too.
Pigeons.
Those are, those are there for a reason.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so, uh, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding.
So move, support.
We have a motion at support, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Verkanen.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then the next one, we need a motion to approve Great Lakes Engineering Group to do the bridge inspection for six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Make a motion to approve Great Lakes Engineering Group LLC to perform the bridge inspection for both top deck and underwater for a total amount of six thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Support.
And we have a motion at support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkanen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, winter parking permits, yay!
Yay! Okay, um, last couple of years, we've been coming to you guys and asking, you know, hey, um, we, I would like to have the ordinance repealed for the fact that, you know, we put it out there on the, um, Facebook, on electronic sign, and we listed as a snow advisory, and it's really been helpful, the people get off the streets, they move their cars, um, I don't, you know, I don't think we need the parking permits, it takes more time to figure out if they get four permits, two permits, one, it's a pain.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we should just go back to where we used to do, just let them park on the street, then if we have to, we have a policy in place where we call it, uh, snow emergency. Uh, I give them more than, I give them like, take six hours to get the cars off the street, not three, so, and then, so we inform everybody, so.
It's so much easier, isn't it?
Yes, so much easier.
And in there, we also allowed them so that they could park up on the lawn, and they had to for the first, they could get it plowed, because that was a big issue, a lot of them don't have any place to go.
But I tell you, last year it worked out really good, the, uh, people actually moved their cars and let us get through there, and then they brought the cars back out, and they did find places to hide them until we came past. So I think it's time to repeal this one, if we find we have problems again, we're going to have to reinstate it. Uh, Bob will tell you the instructions on how to repeal it.
Well, we're not repealing it tonight, but we'll set it in motion as if we were, you know, going through the ordinance process, so.
So we need a public hearing, right?
Yeah, we'll have to, yeah. So, so tonight, tonight, the, the, what we're looking for is just a vote of support to move forward with the repeal of the ordinance.
May I ask a question regarding repeal, if it's repealed fully, would we need to add to another ordinance that, uh, lawn parking temporarily or other normally ordinance violating activities will be permitted for snowing?
Yeah, we had to add that in there because our other ordinance says they can't park there, and they were always issuing tickets for people or notices, so that's why it was put in there.
You're saying it was already added, or?
No, it was put into this ordinance so that they could park there because.
And that's a portion.
Another ordinance says you can't park on your grass, your front lawn.
That's, that's a part it went into, if you read it, this is the, um, parking restrictions we put in place. The one you're talking about goes into the, the road section that they can park in on the street.
For the snow.
During snow mercy, guys.
Yeah. Long as that's still good.
That's still good.
Anyway, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying there's something already in place?
So we don't have to reconcile any other.
Okay, if that's the case, then great, it can be a mere repeal and stricken.
And done.
Okay.
So can we set it, uh, for the nineteenth?
Yeah, well, the clerk and I will, will set that.
Okay.
But you're looking for a.
Do we need to make a motion to set that wheel in motion?
A motion this evening, uh, to support and put in place the repeal process for the ordinance, and then we will do it.
Make a motion to support and put in place a repeal process for this ordinance.
Support.
Winter parking permits, right. Motion at support. Can we just yea or nay it, or do I have to do a roll?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, ban stand at three hundred Broadway, Mike?
Well, I don't know if you all went by the ban stand, look at the condition of it, but, uh, it's bad. Um, I took the steps off, uh, two weeks ago because people started climbing up there and trying to push it over.
We saw them.
You saw them?
The DPW yard, yeah.
Yeah, 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 but, uh, so, the columns are riding off, um, Friends City Hall took it over roughly nine years ago. They came in and painted it and left it, so.
No work has been done on it since two thousand twelve.
Yes. Um, I'm recommending we give them thirty days, come up with a plan, if not, um, we take it down. It's, it's unsafe, and I just don't want somebody walking past there during a heavy wind and.
Well, plus the electrical's been.
Electrical's good, that's all been redone.
Oh, okay.
Because it was blinking there for a long time.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was one of, that's one of the sockets up there.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, that's, um, electrical's been done up to that point, um, but, you know, we, we need to do something with this ban stand before somebody gets hurt.
So, as a member of the planning commission, I believe that they came to us mentioning that they did want the steps removed, and that they did have a plan for making it bigger and better and.
I have been waiting for a plan for three years now.
Oh.
Um, I gave them, I gave them options, I gave them a couple other gazebos that would fit the front front, that was bigger, actually.
Like Ready-May?
Yeah.
Type, oh, okay.
Yeah, and I've not heard back from anybody about the gazebo.
Will it still contain steps, or are you going to make it ADA compliant?
I want it ADA compliant on the ground.
Yeah.
If they're going to do something, it's going to be on the ground, and it's going to be perhaps maybe a little bit bigger to accommodate more people, so.
Kind of a moot point, isn't it?
You mean since we're selling it?
Right.
Right.
But we're trying to sell it to them, right?
Well, they, they have a right.
They have a first right of refusal.
Right.
But anyway.
But anyways, it's currently, it's coming up.
Yeah, okay.
So, how many columns are bad on that?
All of them, all eight. There's holes in them that big around the backside.
Okay, Tom, we looked at a couple of them, and I just wondered if you could jack it up and put a new column under it.
Last time we had to, the last time we put columns on that thing back in the two thousand nineteen, late nineties, two thousand, we had to hire a crane in to lift the top off, and then set it off to the side, we rebuilt the top, put new columns in, all new railings, everything, then set the top back on.
But the columns are setting on the posts that are in the ground?
No, they're not.
They're not?
No.
They're, they're offset?
They're offset.
The columns are hollow or?
Columns are hollow.
Or beneath it?
They're hollow.
They're hollow.
I think I remember the last time, didn't Bob Klingler supply somebody to help them the last time?
When they repainted it, yes. They didn't replace any columns, they just repainted it.
Yeah, it's bad, I looked at it, too, it's, um, it's been there since nineteen, what, seventy?
Well, didn't, uh, didn't they come to us and say that they wanted it rebuilt, but they wanted the city to pay for it?
There was discussion on that, but no one ever came back to me.
But if we're putting it up for sale.
I've sent them a couple emails about the, this, uh, um, gazebo, and, you know, trying to tell them, hey, look at this gazebo, look at this gazebo, look at this gazebo, and last communication, I heard that they were doing the fundraiser for something, and then they're going to try to do a fundraiser for the gazebo next, and that was.
Is the sprinkler system on there?
Yes.
Is it live, I mean, it's not just?
I could isolate all that and then put a panel back up for my sprinkler system, yes.
So, so they, because that was one of the things that they had to have the sprinkler system in to have any kind of community open to the public?
Yeah, the sprinkler system there, the lights also run off the ban stand, but once we get that down, I can put a panel right there, and then run everything off that still.
Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion to give Friends City Hall thirty days to fix?
Come up with a plan, fix or come up with a plan, or?
Well, I need them.
We do sixty days, give them a little.
Well, let's give them sixty days, and we just need to act on this before somebody gets hurt.
So you're going to give them?
What do we have, sixty days?
How about forty-five days?
Okay.
Meet in the middle.
Meet in the middle, forty-five days.
You're going to give them forty-five days, and then you're going to recommend demolish if they don't come up with any type of plan?
Yes.
There you go. Okay. I need a motion.
Um, I make a motion that we give the Friends City Hall forty-five days to come up with a plan to, um, put the ban stand in, to repair the ban stand. Present Mike with a proposal to fix the ban stand.
Before.
If not.
If not.
If not, then, uh.
Follow his record.
We recommend demolition of the stand for safety reasons.
There you go. All right, we got a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkanen.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, conference tables for the meeting, new meeting area at the new building.
I was quite shocked when I went online to see what these things cost. They go from $50,000 to $80,000.
Yep.
And that's, that's a, just a table. And so I got looking around and Greg came, highly recommended to, you know, do a table. So I had him go over there and look at it. And this is what he can come up with. We're going to do the same type of style that Tottsville Township has, except we're not, we're not going to do that ledge on top that they had. So it's just going to be a flat table. And the price is $4,800 per unit. So it's going to be three units. We're going to actually be able to, be able to sit 11 people. And the color's going to be a cherry, kind of like the doors in there. Okay, we're trying to match the doors, come closest to doors we can. We're going to put holes on top for all the microphones and all the wiring and everything. It will be on wheels, so if we rent that hall out, we can scoot it out into the storage room there. I guess, I'm just looking for direction if you want me to...
And just to go off that, Elaine did have me contact somebody else to get a quote before you got to that point. And the quote was at 28 grand. And he said it was because of all the rising prices in the wood. And I said, is this for solid or veneer? And that was for veneer.
Yep, that's the same as this, veneer.
And so, yeah, he was at 28, so this is half that.
Yep.
And Greg does good work, I can attest.
Yeah.
He's done work for me.
It's, and, and it's going to be bigger than Cotterville's because their center section is only, I think, for two people. So you're making this...
Yeah, we got, we're going to do like, I think it's four people and then three, four. I can't remember what, how we did it, but...
You were doing it for 10 or 12?
We're doing it for almost, 11. 11. I think it came up to 11.
And I think theirs is only nine, but it's, it was a nice setup, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing our, just to add a couple seats in case sometimes the treasurer comes and has to sit up here, you know, whoever we have, still have an extra seat for.
And everything is smooth, right? Even though it's three sections, it's just a smooth run.
It's going to be, yes.
Yeah, they just connect.
It's like they have St. Clair and some of the other municipalities.
It looks like one piece.
Now, where it's got to go, you ain't going to be, you ain't going to see this angle like this.
Yeah.
The front's going to be probably kind of flat like you are and the sides are going to come out barely at kind of 15. So you might have to look over a little bit to see who's talking. Because there ain't no room.
Yeah, that's why, the angle, so you can see, you're not in a row.
Yep.
In trying to talk to another commissioner.
Yeah, Cotterville's setup was, it was a nice setup, you know? They had, they had that one built.
And it does help to have rollers on it because you want to...
Yep.
Just push them out of the way.
Wood is heavy.
Yes, yes. The front, the front legs will be loaded.
Yeah, well, I was over there today and it doesn't have carpet on there, so it should roll pretty good.
There'll be holes.
Yep.
And other wirings.
I'm worried about when we move them out of the way.
Yeah, so, so is Paul.
No, the cables, the cables get taken down all the time.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Got it.
You know, so, you know, the cables are working.
So it's just sockets to accept these, but not permanently installed?
Right.
Okay, just checking.
Yep, so, that's the last thing I want to do also is take, you know, okay, or wire just out here and there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do I need a motion to waive?
We're going to have to waive competitive bidding.
Waive competitive bidding first, right? Yeah, okay.
Make a motion to waive competitive bidding on building conference room tables for the new City Hall at 260 South Parker Street.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Neva Phamlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then now we need another motion to accept the bid of...
48 times three.
It's 4,500 or...
4,800.
4,800.
14,000.
14,000 for $1,400 for all three sections.
Can we go 15, so if there's any problems?
Sure.
Okay.
Not to exceed...
Not to exceed 15,000 for the conference room table.
I'll do it again, okay. Make a motion to approve Greg Guthat, is that his name?
Yeah, close enough.
Close enough.
Quote with a value not to exceed $15,000 total.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Kreidler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Neva Phamlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And moving on to the interim city manager report. Mike?
Well, as you can see, I try to do a lot with my other job too. So, you know, attended the Community Economic Development Board, held the interviews for the building official, met with the city manager, search subscommittee, within parking ordinance, held a department head meeting, attended a stakehold meeting for the Olympic State Park, worked with Ben on City Hall, coordinated with High Tech, Tech Security, Comcast to be on site for yesterday. That was a, Comcast is just a pain, but it all happened. Working with PCE on timelines for the big openings for the Union Street Water Main Project, which is going to be July 27th, I do believe. We'll open those bids up, see where we're at. I'm working with the building official to make permits easier and faster to obtain. Worked on the anti-displacement plan and my DPW duties.
On the, on the water street. When was the, then we replaced water lines in there when we took the wood ones out. Do you remember when that was?
I'm sorry, we what?
They, you put the wa, a new water main in there when they took the wood ones out. Remember when they went down the railroad tracks, took the tracks out? Do you remember when they put that water line in?
That water line's been in there since, you talk water street.
Water street.
Yeah, it's stuck to iron. It's been in there since 40s.
In front of all the shops.
Yeah.
Because I know we did something down there at one time.
We placed a sanitary sewer.
We took the wood out.
I don't remember taking any wood out down there.
Okay, I just wondered if you knew then when that was done.
Do I get to speak too?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm still writing.
As you all know, we didn't get that grant, so no big deal. But I would like to thank Aaron, Dan, Jeff and Jack from the DPW and the girls. We made that move happen in one day yesterday and had everything up and running by 6 o'clock. We're business opening up today. If you walked in that building this morning, you couldn't even tell we moved in there yesterday. I'm proud of my guys and the girls. They did a heck of a job and it looks really nice. And they worked their fannies off, I'll tell you that.
Moving those old filing cabinets.
All of the old fire safes, yes.
They must weigh like 800 pounds a piece.
They're about 300 without the drawers in them.
Oh, my goodness.
So, they, they did a great job, awesome job. Didn't complain one time. You guys got some good workers and good plates.
Parker Street is open now for business.
Parker Street is open for business. We will have a ribbon cutting ceremony once we get a little bit more stuff unpacked and a little bit more coordinated. We still got the building officials office that we still working on.
They got plenty of yellow room over there.
But most of the offices are up and running and it, it looks really good. If you got a chance, go by there and take a look.
Yeah.
You'd be quite surprised.
Looks good.
It looks really good.
Yep.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank the board for a beautiful building.
Yes.
We're really proud that we have such a nice facility to look at, so thanks for making all those decisions and getting us in a nice place.
I had my doubts when we first purchased that building. I really had doubts. I didn't think you would take that. I can't swear, but definitely going to turn it into what it is today and it's just, it's actually gorgeous.
The finishes are great, everything looks great.
And when they give them the sign?
I was contacted with Tennessee today in roughly two weeks. Okay, they're behind schedule too, just like everybody else. So we're trying to coordinate this to get this thing over here as soon as possible. And City Hall signs are up on that. The Marine City Community Center sign's up. I got the mailing address, the 260 order that goes on the outside of the building. The lights in the parking lot, I got your bulbs for, and...
Dropbox coming.
Dropbox is coming.
Which I think is, that's huge for after hours and...
Yep. You got to move it down a little bit. The place where I wanted to put it, I think, will be backed into all the time now. After seeing where the parking spots are. And so it's going to go down a little bit further.
That little ponding spot is going to be fixed.
Well, yes, they'll be in to take care of those.
Yeah, plenty of parking, plenty of parking.
We got 39 spots.
Plenty of parking.
Can we leave a sign by existing drop box to say where, you know what I'm saying, where it was located by Guy Center?
To direct them.
To direct them to 260?
We have, we have, in the door up there, we moved to 260.
Okay.
And a picture.
And we're still going to check that drop box up there.
Oh, so that drop box is remaining? You're installing a new drop box?
Yes.
Understood, sorry.
So we'll go up there...
And both will be checked?
Yes, we'll go up there and check that one.
Yeah.
And I got to tell you that, you know, during this midst of chaos yesterday trying to get it in, we've actually had people walk in the door, pay bills, and we...
We took care of them.
Yep.
Nice.
With all the boxes and everything else laying around.
Yeah, sure, just a second.
You know, we took care of them, so.
You hand carried the stamps over.
Yep. No, we were, you'd be shocked at how well we're set up already. It's amazing.
Great work.
Very nice. Anybody have any questions for Mike?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. First, I was asked to ask if, if the Folsky property, has that slowed down for some reason?
Because of the rain.
Okay. But it got really bad and then they started parking in that whole neighborhood over there with all their trucks and stuff because they couldn't get into the property. So they parked them all on Sixth Street and that.
Okay, that's the first I've heard of that.
Well, one of the people stopped and let me know that, you know, they had come in there and they kind of choked up the whole street with all their trucks the one day. So that's why they wanted to know what was going on. And I figured it was probably because of the rain. But we got to kind of keep an eye on that one.
And plus, they also, they ran that storm sewer. They had to come back up the intersection to run that storm sewer.
Yeah.
That was the only way in and out while they're doing that part of the work.
But this was after they got that done?
The sanitary part was the storm. They just did the storm.
I'm not sure, but they started parking all into Sixth Street and it was very difficult for the people to get down through there to get to their houses. The other one is, I know the party boat's up and running and I think that's great, but I'm already getting some issues that have come up. One is it's still docked to the bridge tied off.
I will call him first thing in the morning. I went past there and said, noticed that's still there.
Yeah.
I will call him tomorrow and order it off immediately.
And then the other thing is, is a couple of the, the people in a couple of those streets, because people are starting to park all those streets instead of using the parking lot that he did. And then when they unload at night, they're a little bit on the wobbly side and they're coming through the neighborhoods and they said it's been pretty bad. So, and...
Pretty bad in his car.
I don't understand that because I, I drove through there when the boat was out and there were a total of 14 cars in that neighborhood.
Well, I had somebody come through when they were dropping off shuttle. They had it all the way to the stop sign. When you came down around the bridge, you couldn't turn onto Brown Street because it was all choked up with cars. And if there was a car there, that car had to back up so the other person could turn in. It was a mess. And then Carroll Street is another street that they're starting to move to.
Carroll Street's always been a street that's been blocked.
True, but they said there was a bunch of them and they came down through there. I'm just reporting what I'm getting from the residents down in the neighborhood. So it's just one of those little things that we got to work out. And I think on Brown Street though, you're going to have to work out to make sure that there's a fire lane through there because they were just too, everybody parked too close to the corner.
That's, that's a normal day down there.
Yeah, but, but it's got to be fixed.
Even before the boat was there, people parked on both sides.
I got a big truck and I never had any issues getting through there. And I was there while the boat was out. I was there when the boat came in. I watched the people come and go because, you know, I'm, I'm understanding the concerns and there was only 14 cars. Everybody else was parked in that shuttle lot, you know?
But it's still an issue for those people and it's an issue for the trucks getting down through there too.
Right. We also have to remember that it's just a two-hour cruise, a couple of days a week. It's not like they're there for eight hours. Nobody's driveways were blocked that I noticed, you know, so...
We have to make sure we have a fire lane for the trucks.
For sure.
They can get through.
Absolutely.
It's not an issue with that. I don't have a problem with some of it, but you have to really watch how they get too close to that corner and then people can't see. They couldn't get around the bus, blah, blah, blah.
When I talk to Paul tomorrow, I'll see if, you know...
He's been, he's been cooperative. He's been...
And that's fine. That's why I'm bringing it up to try to nip it in the bud now so that gives them an opportunity to do something with it.
Right.
But on those narrow streets, can the police do an order to have parking only on one side? You know, the other side would be posted, no parking on this side.
But then that, that affects the residents.
Yeah.
But most of the streets are that way because they're so narrow.
Well, yeah, Brown, Russell Street...
Cars are parked there, it's affecting the residents.
I think Brown Street's wide.
Brown Street is a wide street.
Yeah.
The rest of the streets are only 24. The Brown Street, I believe, is almost 30. So you can have two cars parked with a fire lane.
Yeah.
Like Carroll Street, they're only 24. That's why it's only got parking on one side. Bell Street was the same way, you know?
Yeah. Believe me, his season's almost over. I mean, he's, like I said, he's only running, you know, a couple hour cruise, a couple days a week and we're halfway through summer already. I hate to say it, but it's true.
But I will talk to Paul tomorrow and see what we come up with over there.
Last thing is, we're getting these torrential downpours and I know we had a lot of flooding the last time. I know even over the other way. And I think it's because some of those drains are...
We got two, we had inch rain in less than 45 minutes.
Yeah, I know.
We can handle it.
But some of the drains, I've gone around again when I'm riding my bike. Some of these drains are just loaded with crud. They're just packed on the grate.
Yep.
So it's not going to go down.
I sent my guys around and, you know, do, I can't do it...
If I see any, I'll give you a list.
Yeah.
Like I did the one today with the big hole.
Yep. But, you know, I can't go out every day and check them before it rains.
But if I see them, I always try to tell people to clean them if they can, keep theirs by their house clean. But if not, if I see some of them, because I know in North Parker there, that got really bad down there.
No, that's one of, you know, I mean, that's only got a 10-inch line in there. You get an inch line, inch of water and, you know, it's gone after it stops raining, it's gone within 15 minutes. I mean, that last rain, I had three quarters of my town flooded. People were, you know, you can't drive down the street. Give it 15 minutes, it's gone.
And we're, I think...
And, and try to keep their drains, you know? They need to keep them clean if they can. I clean mine all the time.
Yep. Now, again, 29 here, this last rainstorm, 29. It's, you know, Jim called me, he was, oh, like, it's really bad. Is it in the building yet? He said, no, it's not even bad yet. That's why I judge bad.
Until it's leaking in.
It comes in the building. But again, when you get that much water at one time, there ain't no systems going to be able to handle it.
All right, anybody else for Mike?
Oh, one more thing. Water tower. I did have sewers come out and take a look at it. I do have a hole the size of a dime, about 10 feet down from the bolt. So right now we got it spraying out, going down drain, coming out, so it stays off my equipment.
Nobody has any gum?
We tried to find gum to hold it, but so we're looking...
What about that flex seal?
Yeah, that's right, a solder.
We're looking for some of it too, but I don't have climbing gear. I can't climb up there.
You can make a whole boat out.
Lunge a mine.
Put a piece of tape.
Pass it on to our, to the sewers engineers to modify it.
What was the caliber of the hole?
It's inside. So, the pipe that first the hole is the fill pipe and the drain pipe.
You don't want to climb that ladder.
The inside?
When you get to the top, by that time, your arms are hurting, your legs are hurting.
Yeah, so they're, you know, they're giving us a recommendation of what to be done. Now, this is the same area that a year and a half ago, two years ago, that we had some more patchwork done. So, just give you a heads up. Last time, they didn't charge me for it because we're a good customer. We had lots of money in our kitty there. I don't know about this time. So...
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, moving on to Commissioner Privilege. Commissioner Bryson?
I'm just excited to see the new City Hall. Other than that, that's it.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I just want to thank the staff too, all you guys, for all the hard work on getting that building done. I mean, we went in there today and you're right, you've got everything already set up that looks really good. Everything is nice. Solski Construction did an excellent job on getting that project done. I mean, excellent. Everything was top-notch, but it really turned out nice. So, thank you guys for the hard work in the move.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing. Thank Mike and his crew and our girls there in the office. I think it's awesome that, you know, I mean, kind of did a lot, you know, we were in a big transition period there that I don't think we were prepared for. And you guys took it over and plus did everything else you had to do. But I also want to thank the committee for, you know, I mean, you guys did a good job pulling that together and picking out some stuff and backtracking on some things that we, finishes that we had picked out and then they were no longer available. But so, thanks. I'm excited to be in there. So, be good.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yeah, City Hall looks great. I was in there myself today. So, the new City Hall, everybody go out and visit it, pay your bills there, not downtown. And I'm on the committee, I'm on the Planning Commission. So, the Planning Commission discussed some of the new, well, the five-year stuff on changing the ordinances. And they tabled a couple of them and there was a lot of discussion of the downtown development and the parking downtown. So, that was it.
Madam Mayor, can I add to Commissioner Clausen's report?
Go right ahead.
Relative to the off-street parking, one of the ordinances that we updated does include the ability to park off-street during snow emergencies. That was not in the ordinance or anything, but it is, it will be coming to you for approval, but that's one of the changes we made.
Thank you. Commissioner Kreidler?
Well, nothing for me today. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross?